For a second here.
Okay, you guys are on.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Rutan and Vice Chair of the Northborough Board of Selectment. This open meeting of the Board of Selectment Interview Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of June 16, 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the interview committee are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the interview committee to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. Each vote taken this evening will be conducted by roll call vote. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Scott Rogers?
Present.
And Jason Perrow?
Present.
Okay. Jason is here briefly to help us out with the approval of some of the meeting minutes from past meetings that we've had. The first thing we will do is acceptance of meeting minutes of January 17, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move we approve the meeting minutes from January 17, 2022 as presented.
I will second that. All those in favor? Scott?
Yes, I.
Okay, and myself I as well, okay. Next, could I hear a motion to accept the meeting minutes of January 25, 2022?
Yeah, I move we vote to approve the meeting minutes January 25, 2022 as presented.
I second that. All those in favor? Scott?
Aye.
Okay, myself I as well. And finally, we come to the minutes of March 29, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I move we vote to approve the March 29, 2022 minutes. Although Jason, I think you found a correction and app and amendment.
Yes, just that the start time and the adjournment time are incorrect. Diane is aware of it and we'll just ask her to check the video and the posted agenda times to get those two times corrected. Other than that, the content is fine. So I will second the motion to approve March 29, 2022 minutes as amended.
Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That passes. Okay, so we're all set with the minutes of January 17, January 25 and March 29. Jason, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For joining us so we could approve all those minutes and be up to date with all of it. So thank you very much.
Very good. I will see you later. Bye now.
Thank you. Okay. Now we are on to the main business of the meeting, which is to interview for the Diversity Equity Include and Belonging Committee. We have openings for that and the first person you're going to be interviewing is Matthew Benoit. Becca is hosting our meeting this evening, so thank you very much, Becca. And is Matthew in the queue?
Yep, I'm gonna bring him in right now.
Okay. Sounds wonderful.
How are you?
Good evening. Do you pronounce it Benoit or Benoit?
Well, because I'm meeting you for the first time, we'll go with the sophisticated pronunciation of Benoit.
Alright.
Are you Matt or Matthew?
I like Matt, but either one is fine.
Okay.
I will respond.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for being here this evening. We appreciate you taking the time to apply for a position on this particular committee. If you could tell us about yourself. Give us some information about your background.
Absolutely, yeah. So I'll start off with that I just moved to Northborough 18 months ago, November of 2020. 2021, no, no, 2020. Oh my gosh, time is flying.
It's all a blur, right?
Oh my gosh. So originally from Charlton, Massachusetts. I grew up in a family business, Benoit Tree and Landscape, where I learned, you know, my work ethic, so hard work, really making sure that I do better than my father was was the motto in the household. So I didn't have to get my hands dirty. So went to UMass Boston right out of high school, coming out of Shepherd Hill, where I studied business and finance. Started early on at New York Life Insurance, trying to make my own way, start my own business as he would. And then and then from there, you know, at 20 years old, trying to sell life insurance, I didn't do so well. Tough, tough product to sell. So then I actually found myself at EMC Corporation over at Hopkinton, where I became a financial analyst and have fell in love with the track record and the career progression there. I worked at Olympus, really, where I found myself loving the medical industry. You know, really, my, the crux of the story there was that my grandfather had a kidney stone and Olympus pretty much saved his life with with the laser that they developed in zapping a kidney stone. And so you know, they were, they had a position open for finance analysts. I applied for it and the rest is history. And now I'm at Insulet Corporation over in Akron, where we are actively trying to change the lives of people with diabetes with tubeless insulin pumps. So it's very exciting. We just launched a new product, which is pretty much, you know, app controlled. So you'd have a Dexcom sensor. You'd have an OmniPod and it's going to be pretty much like a working pancreas for you. All app controlled, no tubes and no, no daily checking. So everything's going to be on an app. It's really, really cool. So next gen of taking care of people's lives and and you know, diabetes is one that that really can rule someone's life at the end of the day. And and so to be at the forefront of that and to support this company is is true to my heart. On a day to day basis, working with, you know, all sorts of folks, I've got 20 business partners, all shades and sizes. And I really, really love to just give them that white glove service, open up to them, what are they looking for? How do I help them drive their business from a financial point of view? And and as I learn the business, I try to you know, give them, give them more insights than just, you know, the numbers. So I try to be more value added than than the numbers guy. Outside of work, which takes up a lot of time, my wife and I just had a new baby. She's she's Lila. She's five weeks old, so I have been absolutely full, as you, as you probably know. But but yeah, I'm open the moon to to have her start her, you know, life in Northborough. It's just such a wonderful town and, you know, I think that I actually partaked in the public, the public hearing for the 2022 budgeting and you know, I'm excited for the new facilities, the playground that's going in right in the center of town. I heard there's a dog park gonna be going in, so we have a dog. I have a six year old Labradoodle, so I'm excited to, you know, bring him down there and share memories there. And we're just super, super active. So I'd love to bring all of my experiences to the forefront and to be a part of this town and start with the diversity, inclusion, belonging and equity committee.
Wow, that's, that's wonderful. You made quite a progression since your landscaping foreman days.
Thank you, thank you. I hope my father feels the same way.
That's wonderful. Congrats on the baby. And you're right about the park. That's gonna be, I think, completely done by the end of Memorial Weekend.
Awesome.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna make some inroads as far as a dog park and searching out some sites and see where we can go from there. So it's all a lot of good stuff here going on.
Yes, I'm very excited for it.
So tell us, what is the main reason you would like to be a part of this committee and what do you hope to accomplish?
Absolutely. So at Insulet here, I am a part of the Young Professionals ERG, Employee Resource Group. And I think it's critical, you know, I like to consider myself a young professional still. But but having the, you know, I like to think of myself as a a millennial that has good direction, is, you know, a hard worker and, you know, has that new age type of train of thought. So I'd like to just be a young professional in the Diversity Inclusion Committee, right, that that brings that fresh new perspective to the town of Northborough. Really, I feel like I'm an open, honest and and really fun-loving guy, where, you know, I have a very easy time in creating relationships, listening to people to then, you know, bring that to a committee, have an open discussion, in Insulet's case, bring that to the executives and say, hey, the young professionals are feeling this way. How can we help them? How can we, you know, change things that make them either feel more comfortable, make them more equitable in that starting salary per se, you know, bring the finance back into the play? Or just make them feel like they're they're in this remote world, make them feel welcome, right? So that's the main crux of it, you know, just bringing that that new, young professional view on on things and and, you know, in the town, I I put out a Facebook post on on sidewalks when I first got here, that we have a sidewalk under the, under 290s underpass that hasn't been, hasn't been maintained. And I took a picture and sent it and I didn't know how much traction it was actually going to get in wild amount of traction. So from there, I just felt, you know, I can, I could do things like this, you know, I care. And and I'm, you know, I'm passionate about being inclusive and part of the community.
That's wonderful. That's fantastic to hear all that. I'd like to introduce Becca Meekins, who is, one, she's hosting our meeting this evening, but she's the Assistant Town Administrator and has been a member of this committee. Very active member. Becca, is there, are there some things that you would like to further explain to Matt in terms of what is expected of members of this committee?
Hi, Matt. It's good to meet you.
Hi, Becca. Nice to meet you as well.
First of all, thank you for applying to be on this committee. Like Leslie said, this is sort of phase two. So we had an ad hoc committee that went through the first phase of work last year, made recommendations to the Board of Selectmen in early, early this calendar year, January. One of which was to to create a permanent committee. And, you know, I think that one of the things that's important to me looking forward for this committee is sort of honing in on maybe one or two specific items. So, you know, when when the first phase of work happened, we really tried to take a sort of broad brush view of DEI. And what we learned is that DEI is a very, very big bucket, right? It means a lot of things. And so I think one of the things that I'm really looking forward to is sort of focusing the new committee on maybe one or two specific tasks or projects. And so I think, you know, if you have an opportunity to read through the recommendations that were made, you can sort of get a sense of the direction that we were heading in. But I'm really excited to to work with a new group of folks and really just, you know, move Northborough forward. I think that's what we're all about, right? Progress. So
That's awesome.
So, so, yeah, so if you haven't had a chance, on the town's website, there's a Diversity Equity and Inclusion page under the Boards and Committees page. And on that is a copy of the final recommendations. So you can read through those if you haven't had a chance to. And there's a couple of other things up there, just so you can get a taste of sort of what the committee was involved in last year. But it's great to meet you. I'm super excited that you're interested and I hope that, you know, we get to work together.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And thank you for that insight. I'm on the website right now and I will absolutely take a look at that.
Excellent. Becca, what is typically, what typically has been the meeting schedule, the frequency of meetings and when you all have met?
Yeah, so we, because we were on a tight timeline, last time we had a one year charge from the board. We we had to meet, we met pretty often because we, we had to get the recommendations together. So we were meeting twice a month. I don't, I'm thinking that a more realistic schedule is probably once a month. But again, you know, once the committees are pointed and we meet and we sort of get a feel for what people's schedules are like, we can sort of work that out. I'm flexible with remote work. I mean, we can, you know, as of right now, we can continue to meet remotely. That remains to be seen if that will continue past the summer. That's sort of up to the state legislature, but that's a whole nother conversation I won't bore you with. But for now, knock on wood, and for the foreseeable future, we'll be able to continue meeting remotely, which will provide us with a lot of flexibility. So you know, I don't think, I would not expect it to be any more than twice a month. That would be the most that it would be.
Wonderful. Yeah, and I'm flexible as well, you know, I work from home, as you know, you stated, and I finally have a nice setup. I feel very comfortable.
Good.
About how long have the meetings been? Of course, if you're saying that they might be just once a month, that changes things as far as how long you might expect to meet each time.
Yeah, they they range, I would say, you know, the typical, an hour is probably standard, not more than two hours. You know, it sort of depends, you know, sometimes we have guest speakers come in, like the fire chief or the police chief will come in and talk about, you know, project or an initiative. Those meetings might be a little bit longer because there might be some back and forth between committee members and staff, but we try to keep things, you know, moving along because, you know, people have lives and, you know, you wanna, you wanna keep them on the hook, but not for too long.
Exactly. Now, we only have a couple of minutes left before we need to interview the next candidate. Do you have any questions of us or of Becca in terms of of this committee? And what you might be hoping to accomplish?
You know, so I'll start with what I would like to accomplish is just really be becoming a part of the community. So this is one step in that direction. And so, you know, I'm happy to apply each year until I become a member, but but at the end of the day, I've got no real big expectations. I just want to be a part of the community, do good for the community. And I feel like I'm, you know, a young professional, like I said, that has good ideas, can listen and take feedback and then deliver them to, as Becca mentioned, the Board of Selectmen so that decisions and progress can be made on the, on the behalf of the town of Northborough. So with that, yeah, I have no real good, you know, real questions. I think I have to, I have some homework to do with the recommendations. So I apologize, I hadn't gotten there beforehand.
Okay, that's okay. What we'll be doing at the end of this meeting, after we've interviewed everybody, is making a motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen at our next meeting, the slate of people here. If you do get appointed, then you would need to go to the town clerk's office and get sworn in so that you are able to vote.
Okay.
The rises at those meetings, so.
Wonderful.
Other than that, thank you very much for coming in or not coming in, but it looks like they're coming in.
Yes.
Our office, but thank you very much for being here and taking the time and, you know, really providing some nice background about yourself. I think it's wonderful, all the stuff you're doing. Congrats on the baby.
Thank you so much. And thank you for your time tonight. And best of luck in this upcoming cycle of election. Is that fair to say?
Thank you, yes. I appreciate that.
Awesome. Well, I will talk to you soon then.
Thanks so much.
Good to meet you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Is Kevin, so I have on my list Kevin at 6:10 and Melissa at 6:20. Is that?
Yeah. Okay.
So Kevin is not here, but Melissa is here. Do you want to bring her in?
Probably, yeah. Then shove everybody else, you know, further down the line. That would be great.
Okay, I'm bringing her in now.
There she is.
Hello.
Hi, Melissa. How are you? I'm Leslie Rutan, Vice Chair of Board of Selectmen.
Hello, nice to meet you. I apologize for that start right there.
And this is Scott Rogers, also a member of the Board of Selectmen. And we have Becca Meekins, who is hosting the meeting, but she is also the Assistant Town Administrator and a member of the Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Committee.
Hi, Becca. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you very much for being here. If you could explain a little bit about yourself, your background, what you do and why you're applying to this committee?
Sure. So I am a transplant to Massachusetts from New Jersey, moved here, oh gosh, going on 15, 16 years ago. When I got here, I started working for Bentley University pretty quickly. Started working for their police department there as a 911 dispatcher. And then I've been there for the past 14, 15 years, just kind of making my way up. Working from management, managing the communication center to working in emergency management. So pretty much just a lot of law enforcement background for the past 15 years. But working, you know, for a private institution, working in in higher ed and specifically in student affairs for law enforcement is way different than, you know, working in a municipality. So it kind of allowed me to step outside of that role and kind of build relationships within the community with the students, other staff, faculty. So it afforded me a lot of ability, ability to, you know, experience of stuff that was special interests, like being on our, our DEI committee for our division and being on the university-wide diversity committee as well. So I'm my department's, excuse me, I'm so sorry for that. Hold on one second.
That's okay, no worries.
Yeah, she didn't need to leave. Mine was kicking off as well.
I swear, my dog has been outside just laying out there perfectly content all day long. In the moment. So, yeah, so I was my department's representative on the university-wide diversity committee. And then within our Division of Student Affairs, we also have a Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee as well, which I was my department's representative for as well, for the past, I want to say, eight years or so now. So I have a bit of experience doing this type of work, but it is very kind of limited to a higher ed university campus type of work. But still, I mean, that's a community of, you know, with faculty, staff and students all combined, 15, 20,000 people plus. So it's been, it's been pretty enriching over the last couple of 14 years, being part of that community.
Tell me a little bit about, you said you're on the part of the DEI committee there. What kind of, have you your thoughts about that and has it been active? Are there issues that come before you? How is that run?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's, there's tons of issues. So I shouldn't say it like that. So for the university-wide one, we base, we work with the whole community. So whether it's issues that the students are facing or other community members, other stakeholders, with the divisional one, it's specifically for staff. It's for the Division of Student Affairs. So it's basically about promoting education, action, amplification of marginalized voices within our staff so that we can be better prepared to help our students. So the types of experience I have working on those committees, a bunch of facilitating dialogue, whether that's like large groups, small groups.
Uh oh, it's frozen. Can you hear us?
Seems to be on her end.
Oh. It just snapped and it stops. Uh oh.
Um, most recent, let me try to. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, you're back then.
It was frozen for about 15 seconds or so.
So I, I stopped my video so I could hopefully get a better connection, but if you can hear me now, is that okay if I continue on?
Absolutely, sure.
All right. So, and I apologize for that. I'm out on my porch and I don't think my wifi is reaching this far. So, so one of the more recent things we did is we, we use this SALT model, model, this framework to create a leadership training with diversity in mind. I've done a lot of creating surveys for the campus community and kind of doing analyzing that and giving the feedback to the Board of Directors, a lot of creating media content, written statements for my department specifically, leading like lecture style trainings. Every department in my division has to create social justice.
Uh oh. Can you hear us, Melissa? Oh no.
I wonder if she should. She's a part of the team that meets with each department separately. Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right. So I moved inside my house right next to my wifi. The only downside is you may hear my toddler.
Okay.
All good.
Please don't worry about it. That's fine.
So I don't know where, what you last heard, but I was listing off a million and one kind of a task that we perform.
Yeah, and you, you had walked through some of the SALT aspects and had gotten to training some of the leadership and all that. So we got a good feel for some of the elements.
Great.
Excellent. So, so let me ask you another question. Why are you applying for this position and what, what do you hope to accomplish?
Um, so I'm new to Northborough and like four to six weeks or so, we will have been here for a year. So a bit of a new resident. But I have a two-year-old and I also have another son who is a month old, one month old. And yet, this is where we've, we've planted our roots. You know, this is where we're going to be for a long time. So I kind of want to invest in their future and invest in my ability to cause some, you know, actionable impact in where I'm living. So I want to invest in some way. And when I saw, you know, the posting for this, I thought that this might be a perfect way that I can invest in this, in my children's future and and kind of make some sort of an impact for the next, you know, 20 plus years that we're going to be here. Plus, it's just a genuine interest. You know, it's a genuine interest of mine to engage in this work on a, on a daily basis. And I, and I do at work, but it would be nice outside of work and outside of that community to also be able to do it in a kind of a more broad fashion.
Well, you have a great frame of reference for it, doing what you do at work. So I think that's, that's wonderful. Becca, would you like to explain a little bit about the committee and how it operates and how often you meet and what setup will be going forward?
Sure. So Melissa, so this committee is, this is sort of the second phase of work for the committee. The committee was created just over a year ago as an ad hoc committee in response to George Floyd. At that time, the committee was, was charged with providing within one year recommendations to the Board of Selectmen on matters of DEI and how they impact the Northborough community. We made those recommendations in January. One of them was to create a permanent committee, which is what we're in the process of doing here. And so my vision for the second phase of work, I think, is to sort of follow a little bit in the footsteps of the ad hoc committee. If you have the opportunity, if you haven't yet, our recommendations are on the website. If you go to the town of Northborough's website under Boards and Committees, there's a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee page. And on that page is a, is a draft of the final recommendations that were made to the board. So you can sort of get a feel for, you know, the vision of the initial ad hoc committee and sort of the, the direction that they saw this going.
Yeah, I did. I was able to take a look at that and the amount of work in such a short amount of time is is pretty impressive, that the visual, that visual timeline alone was, it really kind of made it easy to lay out how much work has been done.
Yeah, yeah, the, the initial committee put in a lot of time. You know, we were given, we were given a pretty short timeframe. One year is is not a lot of time, especially starting out with a new committee like that. But we were able to get it done. The initial committee was meeting twice a month. The initial committee was meeting twice a month. The way we had it set up is that we would have a guest in the first meeting of the month and then second meeting of the month, we would, we would take care of business, regular business. I'm not sure that that's going to be sort of the direction the new committee takes. I think that I'm open to, it sort of depends on which direction the committee goes in terms of what they want to tap on next. I sort of envisioned perhaps a monthly meeting schedule, once a month, where we meet for, you know, an hour and a half to two hours. They're typically evening meetings. We, we are doing them remotely now, although I'm not sure if that's going to be able to continue past the summer. That sort of depends on the state legislature, but at least for now, we are able to meet remotely, which provides a little bit of additional flexibility for people with young kids like yourself. So I'm hopeful that that'll continue. But that is something to keep in mind, and that if it, if the legislature chooses not to continue the ability to meet remotely, we would have to meet in person. That meeting would be at the, at the town hall. And those are typically done in the evenings. But overall, you know, I, I'm, I'm excited about the next phase. I think that the initial committee sort of laid some, some very good groundwork for us. And I'm definitely interested to hear about your background, working in the higher ed and the DEI in that sphere. And maybe there's, maybe we can learn some stuff from, from, from you and from your experience in, in higher ed. So I'm hoping I get to work with you.
Yeah, I'd love the opportunity.
Melissa, um, do you have any limitations in terms of nights that don't work for you? Because it sounds like a night hasn't been picked yet. Is that correct, Becca? So hopefully you don't have limitations.
I, you know, I, I don't at this point. I, I kind of have the, the privilege of being able to kind of create my own work schedule. So if I needed to block off a certain evening, I'd be able to either work, you know, mornings that day or just have it be a remote day. We, we are starting, no, that doesn't matter. I was going to say we're starting childcare, but this would be, these would be evening hours. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter. No, yeah, I'm pretty free for evenings.
Okay, okay. Do you have any questions of us or Becca? And what, what do you envision being able to accomplish? What would you like to see happen?
Sure, yeah, a few questions. So the ad hoc committee that was created before, how many members from that would be part of this permanent committee?
Uh, that's a good question. So me, I will be one of the members. I'm not, so the, the way that the ad hoc committee was created, it was created as an 11-member body. This new phase is a, is a nine-member body. So there are a, a couple less of us. And the way that we drafted the, the new charge was to provide for representatives from existing bodies. So like there's a, for example, the school department has, has a committee called the Coalition for Equity. And they do diversity-related work specifically for the school department. And so we asked that they provide a representative from that coalition to our, to this new committee. And there's a chance that that could be a person who was sitting on the prior committee, and it may not be. But it'll be up to those, to those committees to choose who they put forth as representatives. There will be at least some overlap in myself. And I think that there's at least one other member of the prior committee who showed interest in, in continuing on with the work and stuff.
If you don't, do you have time for just one or two more questions?
Yes.
So hit the ground running with this, what would be one of the first initiatives? Like what would, what would be the major focus from the beginning?
You want me to answer that? I can answer that.
I do, yeah. What, what, where would, what's the first major kind of initiative? That if, you know, over the next couple of weeks, if I kind of was ruminating in my brain about how to tackle it or, or coming up with some creative ideas, what would be the first thing that we're, that we're trying to tackle here?
Yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a good question. You know, for me, one of the first things that I would like to do once the new committee is established is, is to get some just baseline DEI committee training. It's something that we, we weren't able to do in the initial phase. And it was okay, you know, we had a lot of very, you know, educated, passionate people on the committee. But I think that there's a lot of value in having sort of a, just a shared understanding and a shared language for work. Especially because sometimes the discussions, you know, you're talking about things that, that people have a lot of passion about. And so I think coming from, from a place of, of shared understanding and, and training is really important. So that's sort of the first thing on my list, once the committee is constituted, is to try to get, get some just very baseline training for the new membership. And then after that, you know, you know, I'm hoping that we can review the recommendations together and sort of together, you know, talk about what, what we think is important as a committee and for the community.
That's a beautiful answer. I love the idea of getting a fair, a, a shared language and some ground rules possibly. And then my last question would just be, and this might be a little taboo, tell me if it is, but has there been any pushback from the community? Or where do you see, you know, is there any kind of areas of, you know, they're going to be a little difficult to handle? Is there any sort of pushback?
Not from my perception, I have not seen.
I haven't encountered any. I think, I mean, you know, the, the recommendations that came forward will well receive the discussions that were, that occurred. And even the little bit of community sharing, you know, that one listening session was, was fantastic. I wish we could, you know, I hope we can do more, more of that. So the, the perception I have is that, that was some very positive impressions brought forward by the, by the previous committee.
I'm glad to hear that. I don't really have a feel for Northborough yet. So, you know, I haven't really been, especially with COVID, when we moved here, we, you know, we've been here almost a year, but the world is really currently just opening back up. So I don't have a feel for the town or the residents much yet, which, you know, might be something that I'm lacking in a little bit coming into this committee, if I were able to do so. But I sure have been involved in, in, you know, DEI initiatives where everyone involved is kind of voluntold to be there, and then everyone involved really wants to make a difference together. And those experiences are very different. So I was just curious, you know, where the, where the residents are, are with this? If, if it's going to be a, any sort of a struggle, or if it's going to be a, a pretty awesome experience?
I think it'll be an awesome experience. I have not, I had, I had to really think about that. I have not seen any pushback. And to reiterate what does Leckman Rogers said, I think that that listening session that this committee held was wonderful. It was one of those things where, you know, the whole committee just sat on the Zoom call very patiently, very quietly, and waited for people to call in. And you could tell that people were, I think in a couple cases, trying to get the guts up to call in. And finally decided, you know, this is a safe space for me to do this. The, the group here is receptive to what I'm going to say. And we're, you know, my hope is that more of those are held and people feel confident about calling in. It's great to get that kind of feedback from people and to hear some things that maybe we didn't realize were going on. So.
Well, that speaks, that speaks volumes to, to your committee, to be able to create a, a space like that, especially a virtual space where people feel they could be comfortable in feeling uncomfortable and awkward and creating that safe space for people to be able to, you know, say those things or ask those questions that might be a little awkward. So good on, good on y'all. That's impressive.
It is, yeah. We're very happy about that. But we need to move on to our next candidate. So unless you have other questions?
No, not at all. Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome. And what we typically, what we will be doing is, Leckman Rogers and I will be discussing on the candidates briefly at the end of our meeting and making a recommendation for voting on them. And then the recommendation would take place, the recommendation to approve would take place at our next Board of Selectmen meeting. And if you are appointed, then you would need to visit the town clerk's office to get sworn in so that you can vote on anything that comes up.
Thank you so much for explaining that to me and for giving me your time. Look forward to working with all of you again.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time. And how do you pronounce your last name?
It is Diglio.
It is Diglio, okay. Just wanted to. Okay. Thank you very much for taking the time and wanting to be on here. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Take care. Okay. All right, is...
You ready for this? No, Kevin's not here. I'm gonna, no. CEO is here, so I'm gonna bring her in and then I'm just gonna close my camera and hop off and talk to Diane real quick, but I'll be, I'll be right back.
Okay.
There we are.
Hi. I want to pronounce your name properly. Is it Sarah?
It is Sarah.
It is Sarah, okay.
Yeah. So I apologize if you're not getting a good reception. I'm actually currently in Singapore right now. So there's a time difference here, so.
What time is it there?
It's 6:39 in the morning on Wednesday morning, so.
Well, happy Wednesday.
Thank you.
I'm Leslie Rutein, Board of Selectmen. Scott Rogers is also on the Board of Selectmen. And very shortly, Becca Meekins will be joining us. And she is the Assistant Town Administrator and also has been a member of this committee. And we'll be providing some more information in a bit. So, welcome. Thank you for taking the time. Tell us about yourself. Tell us, give us some information about your background.
My background in terms of my professional background, or you're talking about your... I'm sorry.
Your professional background and what you do and so forth, you sure?
Yep. I am the VP of Learning and Development at Commonwealth Financial Network. And what I do there is, you know, I develop learning and development program and initiatives for the entire company, basically. So I create programs that into, and I integrate DNI programs into the, the learning and development. So it's, it's not separated from the actual department itself. So for all of the initiatives. And at Commonwealth, I, my, my audience, it's both the internal Commonwealth audience for, you know, everyone, the employees within Commonwealth, there's about 1,000 employees there, as well as our advise, our clients, the advisors, and there's 3,500 of them nationwide. So that's who, you know, and I create different programs that integrate with talent management and, you know, all of the different frameworks and stuff like that, that we need for, you know, to, to create a, you know, for specific skill sets, for specific programs, for specific, you know, just different host, a host of different programs, basically. So my background is in learning experience design and user experience. And so I do a immersive learning experience. And so there's, it's a blended approach. I have, you know, anywhere ranging from, you know, my team and I create anything from the platforms that we provide for them, like e-learning, as well as workshops and, and digital programs, as well as, you know, incorporating all of the different programs from outside into the, into the Commonwealth infrastructure. So all of those different things. So really just a blended program that, that consisted of, you know, different host of, you know, areas and platforms.
Wonderful. That sounds really interesting. Very nice. Wow. Okay. Tell us about your interest in this committee and why you applied.
Well, I'm, I live in Northborough. So, you know, that's one of the reasons, you know, I wanted to, 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 you know, I felt like, you know, I think what the, the committee is doing is really good because I think it's, you know, Northborough is becoming more and more diverse. I moved there about 12 years ago with my husband and my three kids. And, you know, and, you know, we're a diverse family, and I think it's kind of important to have that, you know, the, you know, opportunities for, for different, you know, to, to bring about diverse groups. And Northborough is growing, I think. And so there's a lot more families that's coming in here. There's a lot more programs that I think could be, could be offered. And I think it's just, it's just, you know, I, I applied because I saw the opportunity and I want to give back a little bit to the community as well. So.
What, what, what do you envision now? What would you like to see accomplished on this committee? What's the kind of thing you envision doing?
I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of great programs that Northborough offers, but I think there could be opportunities for more in terms of, you know, just some of the programs that we have. I think it would be nice to have a more inclusive program for people who are different, just, you know, just, not just from diverse backgrounds, just from various groups, people with diverse thoughts and stuff like that. I think there's some of those, I, I haven't seen that as much in Northborough. And I would like to be able to have that a little bit more. And I think there's a lot, there's a lot of, you know, media, you know, nowadays, the kids are using a lot of social media and stuff like that. And I think it would be nice to be able to bring that, you know, kind of just incorporate some of those. Like I said, you know, the platforms that I use, I do digital, I do all of the different things. And I feel like there's a lack of that, you know, the digital platforms within Northborough. And I think we can, we can offer that up.
Sounds like you have a lot of great ideas. That's great. Um, Becca, um, could you provide some information about this committee? And the meeting and what you expect out of meetings and what you, where you see this headed for the second phase of this committee?
Sure. So I'm Becca. Is, is it Sierra?
It's Sarah, pronounced as Sarah.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. I did, I...
I don't know where it is.
Um, so, um, yeah, so like Leslie said, this is sort of phase two of the DEI committee. So the committee was initially created as an ad hoc committee a little over a year ago with the charge to deliver recommendations to the Board of Selectmen within one year. The, the sort of impetus behind the creation of the committee was, was George Floyd. There was a lot of unrest at the time nationally. And I think that the board felt they moved and wanted to, you know, signal to the community that, hey, we, we want to take action on this. We think it's important. So the committee was created initially as an, as an 11-member committee. We worked for a year. We met twice a month for a year, drafted recommendations, which we delivered to the Board of Selectmen in January of this year. One of those recommendations was to develop or to create a permanent committee, which is what we're here looking to appoint for tonight. So the board took action immediately, established that committee, adopted the charge, and is now looking to fill their seats. In terms of the next phase of work and what that looks for for the committee, if you have, if you haven't already, if you have a chance, if you go to the town's website under Boards and Committees, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee page on there is the draft of the recommendations that were made. So I think that's helpful, just so you can get a framework for sort of the work that the ad hoc committee did and sort of the direction that they see the community taking. I think that, you know, just in terms of, you know, someone asks, you know, what's the first thing that you're looking to do? You know, I'd like to get some, some training for the new committee so that we can all, you know, have some baseline training on DEI, get a shared language, shared understanding. Because there are people that are coming from this, coming to this from lots of different backgrounds, lots of different reasons for wanting to be a part of it. And so I think shared language and shared understanding is really important before we move forward. But beyond that, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to, to getting the new committee together, to reviewing the, the recommendations of the prior committee and to sort of together figuring out what, what the next step is for, for the committee and for the town.
Thank you for that, Diane.
Do you have questions of us or of Becca?
Yep. So, you know, you mentioned about the, the, the shared understanding. And I think that's a great idea, Becca, in terms of, you know, getting everybody on the same page. Now, what are, have you put the committee together already at this point? And who, who are the people and where are they coming from?
So this is the process for, for developing the committee. So the, the new, the phase two of the committee, the permanent committee, is, is a nine-member body. It has a representative from the town administration, which is me, a representative, representative from the Schools Coalition for Equity. So on the school side of the administration, they have a separate committee called the Coalition for Equity that does DEI-related work specifically for the schools. So we asked that they take a, a member of the coalition and appoint them to the town DEI committee. So there'll be a representative from the schools, there'll be a representative from the Council on Aging. So the Council on Aging serves the senior population in town. They will choose a representative for, for their body to sit on the DEI committee. So those are the three, like, existing town government positions. The remaining six are, are at-large Northborough residents. So that's what we're doing tonight. We're, we're interviewing folks, you included, to, to take one of those six at-large seats. Who gets chosen and moves forward will sort of determine, you know, where people are coming from and what their desire is to be on the committee. But, you know, training is, is sort of one of the first things I want to do before we even get started in the work, just so that we... But, you know, training is is sort of one of the first things I want to do before we even get started in the work, just so that we can all be on the same page and use the same language and sort of at least have an understanding of where one another is coming from.
Thank you for that. And what do you envision in terms of the the vision for the the DNI committee? You know, what what's the first, apart from training, what do you see happening?
So I'd really like to to reference the recommendations from the ad hoc committee. I think that the group, they put in a lot of work and were very thoughtful about the the recommendations that they put forward. And so I want to be respectful of that and I want to, I want to try to take on some of those ideas that they shared in their recommendations. You know, the strategic planning is one of them, looking at developing a DEI strategic plan for the community. What does that look like? What's the scope? Who's involved? You know, we did a lot of, we did one community listening session as part of the ad hoc committee. It was very well received. I'd like to look at continuing to have, you know, opportunities for members of the public to interact with the DEI committee and and bring ideas and issues and things forward so that we can get a feel for the direction that the community wants to go. And I'm looking forward to hearing the ideas of the the membership, you know, having having six, six new people sit on the committee, having a school representative and a council on aging representative, you know, those people are all going to come with sort of different ideas, different passions, different desires. And so it's our job to kind of sort of fit it all into the DEI bucket and figure out what's the best next step for the community. So that's what I'm looking forward to.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Well, unless you have other questions, I just wanted to let you know that at the end of this interview session, we will be just quickly going over all the candidates and then making a recommendation for the Board of Selectmen so that we can vote on this at our next Board of Selectmen meeting and appoint the individuals. And if you do get appointed, you would need to visit the town clerk's office and get sworn in so that you're able to vote on anything that comes up with a committee. So.
Okay.
Much of other questions. We want to thank you very much for coming in. And first of all, did you say you're in Singapore right now?
I'm in Singapore, yes.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much for making the time.
Yes, that's wonderful. My son will actually be going there for a couple of weeks this summer as part of an architectural class.
Ah, okay.
He's in Singapore for a couple of weeks, yeah, so it must be wonderful over there.
It is very nice here. I haven't been here since COVID. My my family, my entire family is here. So I was trying to visit my mom, but because of COVID, right, we couldn't travel. And so this is the first time in the past two and a half years that I was able to make it here.
Wow, that's wonderful.
Thank you even more for carving outside for us.
No worries.
Please give back to family.
Thank you so much. Enjoy your time there. We appreciate your volunteering and being here.
Great, thank you so much. You guys have a great rest of your evening.
You too. Thanks, Sarah. Take care. Bye-bye. Okay. Is Kevin in there? I can't hear you, Becca.
Sorry. No, Kevin is not here yet, but Yong is here.
Okay.
If you're ready, we can bring him in.
That would be wonderful. Okay.
Oh, you know what? He just dropped out. He's not.
You mean a technology issue, you mean?
Well, yeah, he was in the waiting room. He's not anymore, so maybe he just lost connectivity.
And it's always kind of hard for the folks that are waiting that don't know when we're running late or or where where things are in the queue, so it's hard to be patient.
As much as I would love to talk to a lot of these people for a lot longer, actually.
Absolutely.
It's very tempting, but on the other hand, then you're right, they don't know how long they're waiting, so.
Oh, he's he's back.
Oh, good. Okay.
He just, he just emailed me.
All right, we've got Yong now. And you're still.
Hey, good afternoon. Can you guys hear me?
We can. Hi, Yong.
Hey. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I'm Leslie Ruchan, Board of Selectmen. This is Scott Rogers, also the Board of Selectmen. And we also have with us Becca Mekens, who is the Assistant Town Administrator and also a member of this committee. And is very extremely informative about what this committee does. We're grateful that she's here. So please tell us a bit about yourself and your background.
Oh, absolutely, yes. So my name is Yong, you know, Yong Tan, and just call me Yong. So my background, you know, I grew up and studied work in China until 2014. Basically, I got my bachelor's degree back to 2001 in China as a mechanical engineer. And then actually, I went to Europe for two years for my master's degree from 2002 to 2004. And then I went back to China, you know, I I stayed in Shanghai for working until 2014. So by then, I worked for a company called EMC. So EMC, I guess a lot of people nearby, Los Angeles, Hobbiton, know this company, you know, great company. I worked for the company for almost seven years in Shanghai before moved to Hobbiton. So 2014, I make a bold family choice or lifetime choice to move my family from Shanghai to US. And since then, I live in Los Angeles from 2015, actually. I stayed very short a period of time in Whisbrow for like, you know, less than a year. I bought, I bought a house in Los Angeles. We love the town. It's a small, it's very, very, you know, great town for the community. So since 2015, my family, I have two kids. My older is 14, almost 14 now. My younger is nine. So you can imagine when I first moved to US, you know, my younger daughter is only 80 months. Now she's nine. And so since then, I have been working here and living in US from 2014, living in the same town. And I love, I love Los Angeles. You know, I can share the one very same thing, one tiny thing, why the second week, why arrived to Whisbrow, while my friend, that's August, one of my friends told me, hey, Yong, you know, welcome to US. Actually, there's an event happen in Algangkun High School for Apple Fest. That's one week after I landed in US, say, hey, you should go there to feel and attach with, you know, this called American culture, right? It's like an American way to feel and attach how people live here, how people enjoy the life. So I still vividly remember, like, ah, it is one week after, is I I have no clue what the time around. We went to there for Apple Fest. It's amazing. So I say, hey, which town this is supposed to be? We should do this every year. It's Los Angeles. So I bought a house, we found our dream house, you know, my wife love here. 2014, then we bought a house to move in 2015. And I work in here, you know, today, I'm working for Microsoft. And I'm more like working from home, but I have my team in Boston, in Seattle, and California. So I'm like a full-time IT computer and engineering and a manager. And I love, I love town, I love Los Angeles, and I never planned to leave. Well, I see the email from Diane. I say, wait, this is interesting, because my background is very diverse, accustomed myself. Even I from China, I have a whole, I from very different world of China. You guys cannot imagine. I can share with more. I feel like I'm blessed, myself can be where I am today. And I always, always appreciate it, you know, how how lucky I am. I always want to help the people, kind of, you know, do something I have for the society. I'm very active, will be part of the, our Los Angeles Scout troop. So my son is a scout there. So I feel, overall, I feel I can do something. I think that's the reason, that's kind of my motivation to kind of do this volunteer job. I was sort of like a recruiting coach for soccer for like one season for the town. I enjoy it. And I feel like I'm part of this community and I feel part of is a, you know, the town.
That's wonderful. You're doing lots of stuff. You do sound very happy. That's wonderful.
Yes.
Entrenched. That's great. Um, what, um, what would you hope to accomplish on this particular committee?
I think, you know, it's too early to say I I will accomplish a lot of thing, you know, which is, I don't make any kind of promise what I will make sense change. But I think I have a good desire. I mean, you know, everything start with a good source, right? I mean, you know, result could be defense, but everything with stuff was a good source. You know, overall, I think my philosophy is we treat people equally, not just the words, but the action. Right? We all can talk about everybody is equal, but the our mind doesn't think that way. So I really sincerely, we need to respect everybody, treat everybody equal, respect everybody's diversity and a culture defense and help the people who really need a help. I think that's a very kind of a fundamental same, you know, we need to identify who need to help, how could I help them to listen to them? Listen to them, how they're voiced out, not just we speak for them, let them voice out. Because sometime, you know, if if we are not at the same background or same life experience, we don't understand. We're just talking, assuming this is what is the need, but no, it is not. So we need a vocal, let them speak out, listen to them. And then we'll do whatever helps them to, you know, get used to the community, feel feel be inclusive. Yeah.
That's a, that's a great answer. And I I agree with you about just making assumptions, you know, assuming that we are, all our frames of reference are different. So it's, you know, we don't want to make assumptions here. That actually gets me into what Becca has explained to the previous interviewees, which is your goal of providing training, going through some training initially. If you could explain that, Becca, and a little bit about the committee.
Sure. Hi, Yong. I'm Becca. Nice to meet you. So like Leslie was saying, this is sort of the second phase of this committee's work. We were initially created as an ad hoc committee back over a year ago with a with a charge to do deliver recommendations to the Board of Selectmen on DEI matters and how they affect the town. The first, the first recommendation that was made was to create a permanent DEI committee, which is what we're here to do tonight, is to to sort of establish the membership of that committee. And so the board took took the recommendation seriously. The next phase of work for the new group I envision is certainly referencing the existing recommendations and sort of building on that. A lot of the work that was done was done very thoughtfully, is very community-based, very much about creating spaces and programs that are inclusive and diverse and representative of Northborough as a community, making sure that we're not leaving people or cultures out. And so, you know, that's sort of what I'm hoping for, for the next committee, is to to focus on that. Also get a little bit of baseline training on DEI for the committee members, because oftentimes it can be of a passionate discussion. It's, it's, these are things that people care deeply about and that affect their everyday lives. And so having a shared understanding of where people are coming from and and the language that we're using, I think is really important. So that'll sort of be the first task of the new committee. And then we'll sort of see where it takes us in terms of the the group and and sort of the the desire and the direction that that folks want to go.
I love that. Thank you for sharing.
Becca, could you explain a little bit about the meetings and what you envision happening in terms of frequency of meeting and how long they last?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hoping that that we're going to end up with a monthly meeting schedule, once a month, for probably a couple hours in the evening. The the prior ad hoc committee was meeting twice a month, but that was largely because we were trying to meet the one-year timeline that the board had set for recommendations. So because it's a permanent committee and we're not held to a specific timeline, and, you know, we want to be respectful of people's time. I'm hoping that, you know, we can stick to a monthly meeting schedule, but we're flexible, you know, we have the ability to meet remotely for now, which makes it a lot easier to get folks together. So once the committee is created, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out a schedule that that works for everybody.
Um, is it, you have other questions of us or of Becca regarding this committee? And I have to ask you, do you actually go by Yo? I heard you say that your friends refer to you as Yo.
Uh.
Do they say Yo?
No, Yong.
Oh, they did say Yong. Okay, I didn't know Yo was a nickname, which makes sense, actually. Okay, do you have any questions of us or of Becca?
I mean, I, I, you know, I think maybe I have, I just have a few questions, you know, is sort of like a, because I don't have too much information about. First of all, are you or Scott, are you guys a more like a full-time or is this a part-time for you guys?
As far as the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's not a full-time job. Our town administrator, Assistant Town Administrator are full-time and the boys, when necessary, well, we meet twice a month. But we don't actually work in the town hall.
All right, got it. And I think my, the second question would be, you know, I mean, I love to attend if if I get selected, right? I love to participate or join the team as much as I can. So I also want to make my commitment, if I am the the person you guys choose to, from your review, how many hours a month or a day or I should spend on? I mean, I, you know, before, before I really committed, I wanted, because I I do have a busy working, you know, schedule, but I am so interested to do this, this job. So I want to set up myself, I talk to my wife, she's very supportive, say, how much time I need a committee for this role if I will be the 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 person.
Yeah, Becca, how long, you're saying an hour and a half maybe per meeting once a month?
Yeah, I would say not more than two hours a month, you know, that would be, that would be at the most. You know, all of the, you know, the administrative work, so to speak, to keep the committee moving, that's all on me. I'm a full-time staff member who supports the committee. So for you, you know, you just need to bring your thoughts, your ideas, yourself to that, to that monthly meeting, which, you know, sometimes it's an hour, sometimes it's two hours. It depends on what's on the schedule, but I don't envision it being much more than that ever on a monthly basis.
Awesome. Yeah, then I'm in. So I did it from my side, I'm in, you know.
Well, the next step from here is that, once we interviewed all the candidates, Selectman Rogers and I will discuss everything. And then we will, we have, again, six openings here on this committee. And we will go ahead and make a motion to recommend that we bring forward the candidates to our next Board of Selectmen meeting. And then we vote on on the on the approvals there at that point if you're appointed. And I kind of think that you will be.
Oh.
Yes, you would need to visit the town clerk's office to get sworn in so that you can vote on anything that that arises at the meeting.
Okay, and by the way, I'm not a US citizen, you know, I was, you know, I got in my green car since I joined, since I moved to US. So is that a, is that an issue or no?
Not at all.
I don't think so, no.
Okay, I'm the green car holder and not a citizen, you know, we have been talking back and forth, so we should do that, you know. Okay, that's not an issue. All right, cool.
But we thank you. Thank you for taking the time and wanting to volunteer and being so actively involved in town with your, with your kids and your wife and that you like your life, bro. It's wonderful.
Hey, thank you. Thank you. Hey, thank you. Thank you all, you know, give the, give me the opportunity. I mean, this is a actually, this is a perfect example to show the equality and inclusive. I, 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 I love you guys to have this idea. I mean, you know, for me, when I first moved to Loserville, I feel I'm the resident here right away. I'm not a feel, I'm the outsider. But I don't think anybody else have the same kind of way of behavior I am. Because I'm always a kind of a, you know, when I was a kid, if I could speak a little bit more, I was a kid, I just living, not living with my parents. I kind of moving town to town. I get used to wherever I, I told myself, if I go somewhere, I should be loved somewhere. So uh, I move a lot of cities, lot of towns and get a lot of time uh on, on the half-time. But every time I end up a very good result for myself. So I do feel like I have a lot of a good sharing for the commute, for the local community. Also, you know, I do take a lot of local activities because I want myself to feel, hey, I'm, 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 no, I'm not just temporary here. I'm the resident as everybody else. I love the town. So that's all my passion. That's all my passion. I want to do this job.
That's fantastic. We seem very happy. We're lucky to have you here.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. We very much appreciate. Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much. Take care. Thank you very much.
Take care. Yeah, bye.
Bye bye.
Okay. And we only have one remaining person, Kevin Reel. Is he not here still?
Uh, no, we couldn't get in touch with Kevin, but we can, um, Diane will reach out to him and we'll set something else up. We'll try.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds great. Um, so we'll go ahead with our, Scott, I apologize. I was remiss in not asking if you had questions of the candidate.
No, we're, we're good. They were, they were able to share a lot and, and uh we were able to explain the uh elements of the committee. So I didn't feel like uh there was any uh unfinished business in that.
Okay, good. Everything was covered, I think. Um, okay, we also have another candidate, Maryam Ibrahimieh, um, who is interested in joining the committee as well. Uh, but due to religious observances, she was not able to be here uh for interviews. Um, one thing I think, what, how are we going to handle that? Is it in her particular case uh is to waive this interview because of all the candidates? She is the only one who has previously served on the committee. So we know about her and we know about her, um, you know, her work with this committee, which was wonderful. It was a wonderful group of people. And so I, I feel completely confident in um really recommending all the people that we've interviewed here. Again, we have six openings. Kevin is not here this evening, but Matt Benoit or Benoit, Benoit, I prefer Benoit, but because I took a lot of French. Um, Melissa Diglio, Sarah Shelton, Yong Tan, and Maryam Ibrahimieh. Just really wonderful people. This is one of the best interview sessions we've had. Everybody was so enthusiastic and happy and really wants to help out. So.
Yeah, isn't that the best? That everybody was just full in, uh, both feet. That is just great to see.
Yeah, it was. Absolutely. What are your thoughts, Scott, in terms of these candidates?
Oh, yeah. So, you know, no reservations in, in recommending the folks for it. I think the hardest part of this, uh, a little bit of the internal work we need to do is we, we allocate the people to the different terms, you know, that, that remains. So um, I think that might be the, you know, the hardest uh part of this. It's a good problem to have when you've got um openings for everybody. Um, my thoughts on that, and I don't know if it, if it follows with you both, but in a way I'd like to capture both Melissa and Sarah based on their current uh diversity, kind of expertise and experience. I'd like to capture them for the three-year term um, if possible. Um, and we didn't really get a chance to explain uh to folks, but I don't think anybody had reservations about the level of commitment. Uh, so in terms of, you know, if, if there was one question I would have asked, it would have been, you know, any, any issues, you know, signing up for three years. Um, so I think, you know, across the board, everybody's something like they would be enthusiastic to do so. Um, so in that case, um, you know, just I, I'm being selfish in terms of capturing their expertise in terms of Melissa and Sarah to that, to that three-year spot.
Excuse me to interrupt. So basically because both of them have experience currently with
Yeah, operating in this realm, right? And could, could bring, you know, I'm making an assumption, right, of, of bringing that experience um to, 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 to fortify some of our ideas and structures, right, in terms of uh the way they've uh established uh learning uh across the organization in Sarah's case. And then um representing and working uh in the, in the case of Melissa uh across, across Bentley College. So that's, that's a phenomenal experience there in my mind.
Agreed.
Matt, Matt and Yong, um, having, you know, having talked with them, um, I would, I would consider them for, for the two-year spot. Um, it just, you know, we've, we see their enthusiasm and we, we see their uh initiative there. That would, that would leave the one-year spot for, for Maryam. And I think she would recognize that that's not a slight in any way, uh, that that's actually, um, you know, recognition of continuing her work. And I don't think there'd be any problem in, you know, her, her reappointment when the, when the term expired. Um, so not to, not to make that seem like a short change in any way. Um, because we know Maryam's work on the committee as vice chair. Um, I have that right, Becca, right, vice chair? Yeah. So that's, you know, that's, that's a known quality there and, and it completely comfortable bringing her forward as well, uh, because we, we know, we know her and her work in this area.
Exactly.
And, and not having a, another interview with her is not, it, you know, doesn't slow us down in any way.
Right. And that is, we're kind of making an exception here, which typically I wouldn't want to do. I would want to be sure if they get some interview and explains why they want to be on the committee. Um, and explains to the public, you know, a little bit about their background. But I think in this particular case, because of her religious observance time period and because she did work so, so, so much on this committee in the first phase that I, I personally don't think that that's an issue. So I agree. So I agree with what you're saying, Scott. Would you like to make a motion in that regard?
Yeah, and just, and just follow up. I think we'll, we'll look to schedule some time with Kevin Reel um, to get his input and, and all that. So this is great. So we have an opportunity to fill five of the, of the uh six slots. Uh, if I were to wrap that into a single motion, I'll give that a go. And that uh I move, we vote to recommend uh appointment to uh the DEIB uh committee of the following folks. Melissa Diglio and Sarah Shelton uh for the three-year term. Uh, Matt Benoit and Yong Tan uh for the two-year term and Maryam Ibrahimieh for the one-year term.
I will second that. Do we have any other discussion on these candidates at all?
Just a minute. I'm gonna replay the recording of this just so I can listen to them all again.
Yes. Yeah, it was good. Yeah, it's been a lot, a lot of interesting things. Um, okay, um, all those in favor? Scott?
Aye.
Leslie, me. Leslie with ten. Me, aye. So wonderful. Okay, this, this is excellent. I want to thank all the people who applied. Um, and I appreciate all, everyone's enthusiasm and desire to volunteer here in town. It's a great committee. And Becca, thank you very much for your work on that committee as well and for continuing to work on it. Uh, we really appreciate all your work on that. It was amazing what you did in that year. Um, pretty phenomenal stuff in a short period of time. So and I like your vision and your idea about um training, you know, just to develop, you know, common vocabulary and uh, I think, I think that's a great idea because everybody kind of a baseline in terms of, you know, going forward. So great stuff. So thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it.
Of course.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you've got a, you've got the beginnings of a, of a great uh committee here. And looking forward to being in, you know, in a position where I can get it started again.
Yes. Exactly. Yeah, thank you to both of you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Uh, so moved.
I second that. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Leslie, aye.